Calling to order the Limone Unified School District Special Board Meeting on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five at five thirty-seven P. M. Superintendent, roll call please.
Mister De Rial Caleros.
Present.
Doctor Hardy. Mister Morales.
Present.
Doctor Castro.
Presente.
And Mrs. Lopez. I just wanna, for the record, make sure that you guys know Mrs. Lopez sends her regards. She cannot make it tonight because she is recovering from surgery. So she just wanted to make sure that I announce that to the board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
It's moved.
Um, it's been moved in second. Um, is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries four to zero. Are there any public comments pertaining to closed session items?
Board President, there are no public comments pertaining to closed session items.
We will now recess into closed session at five thirty-eight P. M.
...
Back to order, the Linwood Unified School District's Special Board Meeting on November nineteen, twenty twenty five at six oh seven P. M. Superintendent Roque, please.
President Dariel Caleros.
President.
Doctor Hardy. Mister Morales.
Present.
Doctor Castro.
Present.
And Mrs. Lopez. Yes.
Tonight's flag salute will be led by, let's see, who can be led by?
You.
Okay, fine, I'll be led by me.
I was gonna pick somebody from the crowd.
Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Public comment, is there any public comments, Superintendent?
Board President, we have four public comment for tonight.
Okay, for Port Pola City ninety-three, twenty-three, three minutes may be allotted to each speaker to adjust all items if translation services are required, which we don't have a translator today. Please state that and an additional minute will be allotted. Approach the lantern and give your name. First, we have Maria Aguilar. Give us one second to have the timer set up. Okay.
The community wants for our schools to stay open and we need the schools to stay open due to safety. What does safety looks like? Traffic, crosswalks, traffic lights, them and one of dispensaries. Because although my child could get picked up, we have a lot of black kids that will have to walk by themselves and put them in danger, not just traffic, but bad elements, drugs, prostitution, human trafficking, and gangs. Is that what we want for our kids? And not to mention to ICE. Yesterday, the city has rejected the ICE Act that will protect the community. Remember, safety before you make a decision, before you make a decision, think about it. We honor to our children.
Thank you, up next, we have Mari Cruz Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. So the reason I'm here today is I pretty much just don't even know where to start. I got a lot of calls from parents from the community wondering what was going on. And so I guess my question to you is why and why now? The big mention has been it's because of enrollment, but we have been going through this since two thousand ten and we're talking about fifteen years, right? And so to me, the question is why now and then also why is it being so rushed? The big word about transparency, right? It's really, really important that we are transparent. And I see that you guys are checking boxes, we're having like meetings, right, for the community, certain information is being provided, but is it really transparent? And I'm gonna say no, and the only reason is because people still have questions. So please take that in mind as you guys are making the decisions. I was able to read the Equity Impact Analysis and as I'm reading it, number one, just a little criticism from TSS, a lot of the information is just copy pasted from the Attorney General's report that was dated July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, so then my question to you guys is how is it individualized to our community, right? Another thing as I'm reading it, a lot of really good points, right? It's a lot of information, a lot of things that our community does need, that our students need, right? Safe schools, we're talking about facility, we're talking about all these great things, but guess what? Those were the very same things that were needed when my kids were here and we're talking about almost two decades ago, right, a long time ago. So then it becomes a trust issue because we keep continuing to talk about the same things, but when are they really gonna happen, right? Because what I know from Linwood, and I don't, you know, no disrespect to anyone, but I have to be very honest, is that the narrative is always changed based on what we wanna push. And so depending on that, then we kind of go with it and we need to stop that, right? Because we're talking about, she just talked about safety. I work with foster youth and juvenile impacted youth and the number one thing when I speak to them is, you know, you're gang affiliated, talk to me, explain to me. And the number one reason, ninety-nine percent of them say because when I was walking home, so this and this happened. So I really want you guys to understand that. Are the closures gonna happen? Most likely, yes, but don't rush it, involve the community. We have a lot of talent here that we can give a lot of input, but yet you guys hire this consulting company that copy pasted a lot of stuff, right? Let's be honest. And so engage us, we're here, those town hall meetings weren't really town halls because town halls is you give people the mic and then you have dialogue and you have communication and you create community and that's what this is lacking. Thank you.
Thank you, up next, we have Joaquín Messinas.
Good evening, Mr. President, board members, superintendent, staff. My name is Joaquín Messinas and I did, I asked questions and I did a little bit of research and, you know, surprised me that came up to my conclusion that somebody needs to hold accountable. You should guys be, if you guys planning to close schools next year in July or September, you should guys be, we have to be talking about this about a year ago. Unfortunately, the person was in charge didn't tell you about this, he's gone. But this is what I'm talking about when you guys are not transparent with us. He should have brought it up to you guys already, probably two, three years ago. Now, okay, change the subject. I know there, like you said, because financially you have to close schools, which my company is going through too. The economy is not that good, this time I would be working twelve hours a day, I'm only working ten, so I know the economy is not good. And I know there have to be closures, but my thing is, are you willing to sacrifice a kid from Wilson or from Rosa Park while, I don't know what school he's gonna go, I know. You guys mentioned at Wilson meeting that the parents are gonna have their choice, all right? But can you imagine if you guys decided to close Wilson, where the kids are gonna go? What, Lincoln? And now remember, we have a lot of single moms in our district and some of them go to work at seven, six o'clock in the morning and those kids, nine, ten, eleven years old, they walk to school. So just think about that, we're talking about safety, think about that. Now, like I said, I know life is about sacrifices. Now, why don't you thought about, okay, if a kid is gonna walk from Wilson to Lincoln or Limbert, why don't I make a fifteen, sixteen-year-old walk? Why don't you guys think about closing Vista? Closing the adult school in Atlantic? Close Pathway? Why don't you guys, if you really guys really wanna work with the community, why don't you about, before closing elementaries, which I still believe not to close them out, but why don't you do that? Why don't you think about that? You know, life is about sacrifices and if you really have to sacrifice an elementary, Helen Keller. The last meeting when that was Helen Wilson, I talked to some of your staff and were you willing to expose your kids or your grandkids walking through Long Beach, seeing all those ladies, the way they're dressed? And some of you guys, I showed the picture that I took about a lady and you all say no. I wanna expose my kid or my grandkid to that. So if you really want to really close one elementary school, I'll go for Helen Keller. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, up next, we have Evangelina Cruz.
My name is Evangelina Cruz and has the district considered how moving more students into another school will affect space, safety, and learning? Are, there are state guidelines about minimum square footage for students and adding more children to an already full school can lead overcrowding. So I want to ask clearly, will the receiving school still meet the required or requirement space for students once all those students are moved? And can parents see the information? As parent, we deserve transparency, we need to know that our children will be safe, supported, and not crowded into classrooms that are too small. Thank you.
Thank you, that is all for public comments. Now move on to item ten, item ten A, school facilities optimization. Mr. Superintendent.
All right, thank you very much, Board President, good evening, everyone. I wanna thank the board as well as our community for tonight's study session for taking the time to really dive deep into the data and the analysis. We wanna make sure we provide you with as much information as possible for tonight because understanding the data, discussing all those scenarios and the options will help provide some direction for Linwood's future. Just to make sure we clarify, this board meeting is not a meeting for decisions. This is just to engage in the data, have an open dialogue, make sure that the board really is aligned on what path we wanna take moving forward. And so if I can go on to the next slide, leave that slide up there. So the next slide has some background information. So I wanted to really start by revisiting the process that brought us here tonight. So in October of two thousand twenty-four, a facilities master plan was completed. The facilities master plan went through every single campus and gave it a rating, every single building that we have in the district. And that really positioned us to take a look at, again, what November would bring, which was a community-approved Measure U bond in the amount of eighty million dollars. Now, just for disclosure as well, we have not issued out these bonds, we have not accessed any of the eighty million dollars from Measure U and we are, you know, waiting on board's direction once we continue to engage in this data analysis of what we have in the facilities as well. In January of two thousand twenty-five, the board had an opportunity to take a look at our facilities master plan and also gave direction to cabinet, the superintendent, to explore the idea of school consolidation. In April, we approved an agreement with the company that was referenced earlier, Total School Solutions, to work with that company. And then in September, we had a representative from School Solutions which gave us, and he gave us an overview of the process at another board study session. And so that's what brings us here tonight and so we're gonna take the next step in terms of reviewing data and scenarios to really help us make more informed equitable decisions. As a reminder, next slide, please. So while we are here, I think we, as everyone knows, we are facing declining enrollment. But at the same time, as a school board, as a cabinet, as an entire organization, I think it really captures why we're here. Number one, I think we all recognize that every student here in the school district in Linwood deserves a modern, safe, and supportive school. I think we all agree on that. The board, you came to these schools, you live here, you are parents here, you have family, you have like cousins, whoever that, so you are alumni here as well. Number two, you know, as a school district, we obviously, we wanna make sure we use our resources wisely. And using our resources wisely also includes facilities as well. Number three, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, we are adjusting to enrollment and these changes happen to us when it comes to enrollment because it's the cost of living here is high, birth rates are low, and then for us as a school district, we wanna make sure that we're proactive and that we plan ahead. Next slide, please. Just to give you some examples, so these are some districts, some comparable districts that have also gone through this process. So Hacienda Ponte, Inglewood, they also went through this process to close, actually closed six schools. Baldwin Park, Azusa, closed five. Mountain View, Pasadena, which is also going through some challenges right now as we speak. Pomona, Compton, Norah Lamorada, and the list goes on and on. And some of these are, again, driven by population shifts, they're driven by declining birth rates, but it's not a reflection of our district. But it's not a reflection of our district or our community. It's a reflection of what's happening across the state. Next slide, please. To further kind of support that statement that I just made, you will see that this is the birth rates and the population by age from 2008 until 2022. You can see the birth rates we had in 2008 was almost 1,600 births. And now, like over 10 years later, it's now down to 781. And so this story is really telling you more about that many more kids are having, that many more adults aren't, aren't having as many kids. So that's what the data tells us. Next slide, please. And then to further help support that, this is our kindergarten enrollment numbers from the last 10 years as well. So in 2015, we had over 1,000 kids, kindergartners. In 2025, we're about half of that. So you can see that enrollment continuing to decline, even with kindergartners, which actually projects us for the next grade, like grade one, grade two, all the way up until grade 12. Next slide, please. And then if you look at it from a school perspective, this is the enrollment from all of our elementary schools from the last 10 years as well. You can see, starting at the left with Abbott, we had 730 students enrolled. And now in 2025, 2026, we have 457. If you look at Keller, same story, 680 to 432. Lincoln, 548, down to 323. Lindbergh, 812, 10 years ago, down to 515. Lugo, 419, all the way down to 271. And, and the story goes on and on. And Wilson, 708, down to 412. So again, this, this, this is all the elementary schools. It tells you the story from enrollment. Next slide, please. Some additional background information for you as well. When we look at our current enrollment that we have in 2025, 26, and I kind of remember that we also had almost double the size in 10 years ago, you can put that two and two together and realize that we have now capacity, excess capacity. And that excess capacity is a result of that declining enrollment. So if you look across the board, every elementary school has excess capacity. And these are excess seats because, again, we were able to accommodate as many students at one point in 2015. Now we have empty seats. I think I've shared this with you in a previous slide as well. Next slide, please. And Dr. Jensen will, will go over some of the financials with you.
Yeah, good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Gittes. You know, one of the factors involved in, in making this decision and, and what got us here is just taking a look at our budget. This is our unrestricted and our restricted budget as of our June 2025 budget adoption. We'll have an updated budget for the board at our next board meeting in December when we'll bring forward the first interim. And, but you will see a continued pattern of declining enrollment causing deficit spending. So you can see our revenues taking a drop as they drop with enrollment. And there was a significant drop in revenues for, or there will be, from 25, 26 to 20, oops, sorry, my dates are not correct. 25, 26 to 26, 27, that should be amended. And that's because of the COVID funds finally expiring. So there's a significant drop. But you can see that our expenditures are outpacing our, our revenues. So our costs continue to go up, our utilities, our cost to support our employees. The raises that we were able to give out to our, to our teachers and to our, our key union members are outpacing the revenues that are declining. We are able to meet our minimum reserve at 3%, but you can see that it is declining. And that Lego did ask us to complete a fiscal stabilization plan. Not yet, not yet. No, but it's definitely worth considering. Yes, my, my feeling is that we would. If, if we maintain the existing fiscal stabilization plan.
Dr. Jensen, quick question on the document. So it's 25, 26, then 26, 27?
Yes. I apologize for the typo. Correct.
And so the 5% on the reserve, I mean, it's all throughout, there's a decline on the reserve.
Yes.
And, and I would add that this budget assumes the fiscal stabilization plan has been put into place.
Yes. Yes, we made reduction. So there will be continued reductions to our expenditures.
Can you explain a little more about those possible continued reductions?
Sure. So back in March 2025, we brought forward a fiscal stabilization plan that, that did outline our confirmation to reduce expenditures. Primarily, we looked to cut contracts as, as much as possible and move items from the restricted budget, unrestricted budget over to the restricted budget. We also did have to do some staffing reductions and we do anticipate some additional staffing reductions from our fiscal stabilization plan for next year.
So we anticipate possible staffing reductions in the two years out?
Yes, yes. We did confirm with Lego that we would work to reduce staffing.
Yeah, and then as part of that too, that many of those, the funds, we were also moving those actions to restricted funds as well.
Yes.
But that doesn't preclude us from not having those staffing reductions. So despite, does that make sense? Yeah, so hopefully I clarified that part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Superintendent, regarding the contracts, I know we've had conversations about this, but regarding the contracts, what are some strategies or some resources, some action that's being taken right now to address contracts?
Part of our cabinet review is that any new contracts, we scrutinize, we review it. If it's a renewal, we also look to renegotiate that renewal to see if that we can reduce the cost of it, whatever that service program, provider, whatever that we are looking at. So we are looking at all of that. So if I see a new contract, it already causes me to go, Dr. Jensen, Dr. Martinez, Mr. Zaragoza, why are we having a new contract? And many of them can probably tell you the same thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So the next slide outlines the work that our committee, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, go ahead. You were gonna do, okay. So the equity impact analysis, as part of the report produced by Total School Solutions, they provided an equity impact analysis report. And I believe there's a copy available for all of the board members and it's posted online. There are requirements that districts that are under fiscal distress must, must adhere to when they're considering closing schools. A district that's under fiscal distress is a district that, as Mr. Morales mentioned, isn't able to meet their third year out or their second or their third year out in their financials. We are able to meet it. But we still went through this process just to adhere to the requirements and the best practices laid forward by the, the state. So we looked at data with the committee. We applied board-approved metrics with, during the process. And then the committee worked to develop data and formed a consensus-based recommendation.
Question. One thing I asked the other night was about the equity analysis. And I'm just curious what the methodology was to review, ensure that we were utilizing equity in our analysis. I'm not really seeing where that was the core of the analysis aside from just simple data gathering, which I think is, is useful. But I'm trying to find where the theory we applied around equity sort of comes in in this process.
Yeah, when this was shared with the committee, the, the process was to take a look and see if any of the schools that were considered for consolidation had higher concentrations of specialized populations or populations that we know have been traditionally marginalized or need additional support. So it was brought forward to the committee to take a look at that data and see if there were, you know, sites that were supporting larger percentages of populations and subgroups.
So I think that, that in my mind is still just gathering data. The question that I'm having is, after the data is gathered, how did equity inform the recommendations? Because the goal of equity is to achieve justice, right? We know there is imbalance in circumstances and we, and we know that because of the data we gather. But flying the equity framework says because this school experiences a higher level of absenteeism and that means this intervention is, is undertaken or this recommendation is, is sort of changing that way. So I think for me, that's one of the areas that I'm sort of confused by because I don't feel like this is steeped in equity more, less than it's steeped in just research. Again, research is, is great, but I'm, I'm wondering what our framework is for ensuring that there's actual equity in the recommendations that, that came up. And I know I, on one point, again, this is part of the discussion. I know there were other schools that were considered, but they were moved away from because of issues in their communities that made them not viable. So in my mind, that is a step towards equity. But, but the larger scope and larger brush of equity would have us apply a, a theory from the data that we gathered that we were able to make, to create a thesis around our approach and have that sort of color the recommendation that came forward.
But yeah, that's good feedback. I think the committee just kind of looked at it in a different way, but I, I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah, I would add that even with equity, you know, in terms of the data that we were looking at, we did look at demographics, we did look at transportation needs, we did look at community impact, we did look at just some of the, the nuances from each school. I know that there was qualitative discussions about the location of the school. I know that we heard a public comment today about the location of Helen Keller in particular. That, that did come up. So those conversations around where schools, where students walk to from, what kinds of services are being provided. I think we looked at CLM classes as well. So like when it comes to all of that, absolutely that we could go deeper because we wanna make sure that, again, we're trying to provide as much nuanced approaches as we can when it comes to the student populations that we serve and the communities that we serve and then where they're located, where they live, and the, like the big, large streets as well. So those are all factors that, in terms of the framework, that I would agree with you that, that could, we could potentially get more deeper into that data.
I think that's where I'm struggling because the rationale is missing, this data focus. And again, I think as a district, we still need to do some work to truly implement data as far as equity in the first place. I think we're really good at equality. We're talking about equity is really getting to the specific needs of a different school, community. And, you know, I'm not really comfortable with saying we did an equity analysis, what we have now. I think, I think we did a data analysis, which I think is, is useful. But based on what, with the data that we found, we should be clear on, here is the thesis or theory that we're gonna apply to this decision-making based on our goal of achieving equity. And if we can't name that yet, then we need to look at the data a little deeper. And, and, because I think in that, we're gonna find some other considerations like the comment about Helen Keller's brought up as far as this closing because of what they're dealing with. And I live right there on that street, but I'm also like, those students also need equity, right? So what, what does that look like?
Right.
So this is my wondering.
I think, yeah, I would agree with you. I think the lived experiences of, of the families and the students, we definitely, that's a gap that we definitely need to capture. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Next slide.
So this is just an overview of the work that, that our committee did. And again, I don't think we've mentioned the, the committee was comprised of our union leaders from, from our three bargaining groups, as well as parents, as well as staff administrators. And so what, some of the things that the committee did review were the student and staff benefits of larger schools, about six, schools of about 600. And Mr. Zaragoza, in a moment, will go through a scenario that, that outlines that. We looked at the enrollment trends similar to what Dr. Gittes shared with us. We reviewed district programs. Dr. Gittes mentioned, you know, the schools, some schools that manage a dual immersion program or CLM programs, how school consolidation would impact those programs. We'd looked at our school facility conditions and we'll look at that as well this evening. And then the committee did reach consensus around a recommendation they wanted to bring forward to the board, which is to move Hustler Middle School over to the current Limwood High School Bullis campus. Used to be Limwood Middle School Bullis, effective August 2027, when we're able to reopen the Imperial Campus and those students return to their castle. And then we reviewed student scatter plot maps to take a look at where students currently live and how far they live and, and considered travel times and routes that they would take. And then the committee also did then arrive at a consensus to make a recommendation to the board to close and consolidate the three noted elementary schools, Lugo, Wilson, and Rosa Parks. That was our process. And I think Mr. Zaragoza is gonna share a little bit more about the, the configuration of elementary schools.
Next slide, please.
Superintendent, can I ask a follow-up question? Dr. Jensen, I think this is a follow-up from my Thursday question, but just, just to be clear, in the reviewed of school facility conditions, the portables that are currently at each of the sites were part of the review of the conditions of the schools?
They were, yes, they were part of that.
And so, and did we note and indicate which of these different schools have empty portables that just need work on pulling these out of the different facilities so that the grading of that facility would not be impacted?
We do have information on the number of portables. We did not consider removing any portables. At this time, we wanna wait to have those discussions until we make a decision around school consolidation.
Was the capacity of each of the schools accounted for including those portables?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I think, I think that might be, you know, that, a question and, and a challenge, right? Because some of the portables are not in the most optimal conditions.
Correct.
And if we're counting those portables as learning spaces for children, you know, I, I don't think that we want to put our names behind and, you know, our children, any of our children in classes that are not in optimal condition. So I think that data is just, is just data that is, that is incorrect. There's a lot of work to happen to be able to remove what portables should not be in these different spaces to ensure that children are in the most optimal enclosed conditions. And I think that data is flawed with respect to having it being graded as there's space for children in this school, let's just say Wilson Elementary, but you've got six portables that have rain and other, you know, flooding and other conditions. So I, I wanna just remind us that that piece of information doesn't seem accurate and seems flawed.
I think one of the board priorities has always been not to have portables and use portables.
Yes.
I mean, so if we're making a decision based on that, I think there should be some kind of attention paid to what portables are there. And if we have, you know, over excess space, we should be getting rid of the portables. I think that should be a board priority.
Yes, and we have, in the last three years, we remember, we've removed 40 portables from the district. So we, we have noted that as a board priority and we've started to remove those, particularly those that are in the worst condition. But I have a listing of the number of portables if that's of interest. And we'll take a look at that information on it later.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So this slide is a comparison of two sample schools. I know there's been conversations in regards to the class size for a larger school compared to a smaller school. But you'll see that TK class, regardless of the number of students, will have 20 in a class at that grade level. Kinder third, Kinder through third would have 24. And then fourth through fifth would be, fourth through six would be 30. So having a larger school, we would still keep the same class size averages. The challenge happening with the smaller school is a couple of things. For ELD, we do level our students. So we put students into high, medium, and low in regards to language acquisition. So when you have a class, a, a grade level with just one teacher or one and a half teachers, they can't split those students up into three different groups to work on ELD leveling. So that's one of the things that we looked at when we have bigger classes, I mean, bigger grade levels where students can be leveled into different learning spaces. The other one is inclusion. So one of the directions that we're going with So one of the directions that we're going with is having our students be included more in the gen ed classrooms, slowly mainstreaming them, mainstreaming them more into classrooms. So if we had five students at a certain grade level and we have a small school, putting those five students into that one grade level would really push that class really large. So if, let's say we had 30 students in fourth grade and we had four, five fourth graders that we wanted to mainstream, we would put those five students into that 30 class and now that class would be 35. As opposed if we had three classes of 30 and we pushed students in, it wouldn't make that large of an impact on, on the pushing in. And we would look at those things. Also, it reduces the combo classes across, so, so, so having smaller class sizes, you don't have like the perfect number of students that enroll in a class. Every year you have a different number of kindergarteners. So if you had 36 kindergarteners, you couldn't make one class of kindergarten. You'd have to make one and a half classes or whatever it'd have to be. So that creates an opportunity or creates a situation where there's more combo classes. So having a, a school of 600 really provides that educational benefit where we can move students into different things, identify the support that students need and level students based on whatever support they need, whether it be for inclusion into a mainstream or to level students into ELD classes. So, but the one thing I did want to stress, like I said, was that the class size would remain the same. So, so whether they're in a school of 600 or a school of 300, the class size does not change.
And that's based on the contract we have, right?
That's based on the contract that we have, yes.
I think that's a misconception out there that.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not like we're going to move students into smaller, I mean, into more, move students into one class and, and impact that class. So we would open up more classrooms at a school. And then the teachers and the staff would move with those, with students. So that way we can provide that optimum instruction to our students at whatever schools they go to.
I wanted to add, sorry, I wanted to add that on the table on the right, the table on the right that has the school of 600 kids with two TK classes, three kindergarten classes, three first grade, and you keep going to each grade level. That table on the right is what we define as an ideal elementary school size. Like if you look at any of the research, you look at any of the other districts, the, that is the ideal elementary school enrollment size with the number of teachers that we have that can really help create collaboration. It can really allow, prevent combo classes that Mr. Zaragoza mentioned before. That's, again, we strive for that ideal enrollment number. So. Yes, sorry, Dr. Castro.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I have a couple of questions. Ideal elementary school size. However, I've visited all of the school sites and I have visited cafeterias, campuses, restrooms. So I'm wondering the capacity of, you know, with, with larger schools, I think it's important that we think about whether a 30-minute lunch period is going to be sufficient for offering meals and for children to be able to enjoy a healthy meal for 600 students versus 300 students. The other thing to consider is restroom facilities. And having just last week walked several campuses and of course, you know, just over these years visiting campuses, some of these schools have restrooms that are in different areas. Some of them may be closed. So I think it's important when we think about ideal elementary school size that we also think about other school spaces, which is cafeteria, restroom, you know, community spaces, a library spaces, the opportunity for, for yard spaces. So just wanted to offer that as part of optimizing for a school of 600 students.
I think the other piece would be that we would definitely staff schools to support whatever number of students are at that school, whether it be custodial or nutrition service workers, to ensure that we have enough staff. I mean, our schools, those schools were built for larger number of students already. So I think it's just a matter of working with our sites in regards to the resources that they need in order to ensure that students and restrooms are clean. The other piece that I didn't bring up is ever since I've been here since 2010, we've kind of gone into what is data reflection sessions after we do benchmark exams. So students take quarterly or regular benchmark exams every six weeks. And then we have collaboration sessions for teachers to collaborate by grade level. When you have a smaller school with one kindergarten teacher or one first grade teacher, there is no collaboration. They're looking at data by themselves. And I think research, kind of what Dr. Gettis was sharing, research shows that when our teachers work together and collaborate and look at best practices and what's happening, and a teacher can look at Mr. Morales and say, hey, your scores were really great. What did you do this last time? And Mr. Morales is able to share his best practices. That's a great form of professional development for our teachers that have been, has been very successful for our district as, you know, we continue to move forward educationally for our students. So I know I didn't, I didn't stress that piece as well.
Can we go back to the class sizes? Because on Thursday I asked for more like specified data for each school site. So do, do we know even preliminarily the number of increases per school site if, with the current recommendation? So I, I see this, this model of 600 students, right? So can we say that if we close this school, then here is the actual impact of how many more kids that that actually means for those schools?
I can answer that. Good evening. I don't think we can say that because we do want to give parents the opportunity to choose what school they want to go to. We don't want to pre-assign a school. A lot of our families go to different schools, so we, I, I think that would be a disservice if we put them.
But it still would have to be a capacity question at the same time.
Oh, a capacity question.
Like at some point, if we have, if we have this thing where people say, okay, this is the best school in Limwood, which I agree that that may happen. And all the parents in the community want this school. And we say, here is the cutoff because we know that here is, here's the actual, even though there's space, here's the actual workable capacity of that school site. So you can't, you can add 80 at a school site and that'd be workable, but 100 is pushing it, right? That's the question that I think that I want more detail around, so.
Question, so you did mention that, that you do not have a predetermined school site for students. They will give the parents the choice, but what if parents do not respond to, let's say, a survey? You know, wouldn't there still be a determined school? Because, you know, when kids get enrolled for kindergarten, you know, and they submit their application, they come to the district and they ask what school they belong to, you know, they already have a determined site. Like for example, where I live, Abbott is my assigned elementary school. So wouldn't there already be one assigned to them? Perspectiveally, because we do have to average out the numbers that were not overflowing one school more than another.
Yes, so if we did go with school closures, we would have to redo the boundaries. So every school has an assigned school. But I, we would recommend, like, let's say a parent doesn't respond back and staff have attempted to, to reach them. We would recommend a school that's closest to them because we're trying to do also safe passage routes where they don't have to cross major streets. We would look at that as well, but we would pre-assign a school if they don't respond.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next slide. You were.
It was you, but I could do it. So this is just, so we're going to take a look at some additional data, you know, some things that I know that have come up, both from the board and the community. We're going to look at the potential operational cost savings if an elementary school were to close. We're going to take a look at campus conditions and portable counts. We're going to talk about the cost to upgrade each facility to recommended, to the recommended good condition. And then we'll take a look at some scenarios and talk about supports that would be in place. And I know there's a question about the community schools impact, so we'll talk about that item as well. So next slide.
I have a follow-up question, if I may, Superintendent.
Yes.
The, I think another review of additional information is something I've shared about other district property and whether or not we're able to identify other district property as part of like the decision-making process. It's coming up.
Yeah, it's coming up. It's one of the other slides that we have.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a, it's a big, thick stack.
Well, I'm happy to see that.
Yes, okay, all right.
So we wanted to.
We'll go, we'll talk about the support for students.
Yes, so we wanted to continue to share the service. We did hear concern about possible support for students that families might lose. And we wanted to clarify that all students will have access to social emotional learning specialists that they already have at all schools. They will not lose that. Our licensed clinical social workers, they will not lose that access. The community school case managers, while they might reduce, because if we do lose community schools funding, we might have to lose three, but they will stop, still have access at the schools that will continue to exist. We'll have community school case managers, our community liaisons will continue, and our certified student support analysts. So students will still have access to all these support services. Next slide, please. We will also recommend safe school routes for families to take, that way they don't have to cross major streets if they're, when they're choosing their new school. Also, as Mr. Zaragoza shared, you know, it's going to reduce hopefully the combo classes, increase the special education inclusion, and we'll ensure that our multilingual learners will have level support with the support for the students.
All right, next slide, please. Okay.
So a question that's come up is just, you know, how much would we save? And I know Mr. Morales asked, you know, would this assist with deficit spending? This is a rough estimate of how much would be saved per, annually per closed elementary school site. You can see the majority of the savings would come from staffing reductions, you know, any, any single positions. For example, a principal, we wouldn't need to carry that principal over if we were to consolidate schools would be included in the reduction there in staffing along with other positions. Some additional pay, we have a lot of honorariums and stipends that go out to teachers for supporting the yearbook, et cetera. We wouldn't need to pay that for that school site. There would just be one person supporting the yearbook. And then our average utilities cost for an elementary site is just over $100,000. So it's about 1.4, I rounded it up to 1.5 in the scenarios per, per year annually saved.
And Dr. Jensen, just to clarify, the staffing here does not include teachers?
No, these are just the, the teachers, anyone who supports students. So like an instructional aide that works with a student, that instructional aide would move with the student. And then teachers, although they would have to likely do some movement and Mr. Zaragoza will talk a little bit, or I think maybe I'll talk about it in the scenarios around the number of staff members that would be impacted and having to move. This number really reflects the reductions from positions that would not be needed at that school site.
Pause here, yep.
Follow-up question for the staffing reductions. Is it school site specific staffing reductions and district possibly staffing reductions? Or is it only school site reductions?
So this is just the operational cost. So this, this number here is just talking about, talking about school sites. In our facilities master plan, that's where we have a good number of our district reductions.
Okay, thank you.
So the next slide offers some information on our facilities, conditions, and needs. And I apologize, it's kind of small, but I did cut and paste it right out of our facilities master plan that was completed back in October of 2024. And the key information here is you can see each of our, our school sites or our, our school properties listed on the far left. And then the total budget to bring it up to good condition is that final column on the end. So if you go all the way down, we do, we did have at that time, about a year ago, or just over a year ago, identified the need of $240 million in improvements for our campuses. And I think everyone here knows that we were able to pass a bond for about $80 million. And so that's one of the drivers and the reason that we're here today is we have $240 million in need and we have about $80 million plus about $12 million left over from our other bond to address those needs. So that's crucial. And, you know, so you could take a look at each of the schools. Abbott, for example, if you go across to make improvements to get Abbott up into good condition, it would cost about $13 million, 12.9. Some sites are already in good condition. Helen Keller is a good example. You can see there's just the dash there because Helen Keller is deemed in good condition at this time. And we'll take a look at each of the three identified schools in a moment. But I will note too, like Hustler, Hustler has $20 million in need. So the decision to move Hustler over to the Bullis campus is, is a savings for us there. So next slide.
Question.
I think there's a question. Yeah, I think, so for example, we invested a few million to bring the Bullis site up to capacity and condition for a high school. So the $23 million for that site is related specifically to what? For example, I'm just curious, what is outstanding there?
Yeah, I'd have to pull up the, the, the full facilities master plan to, to identify. I know definitely the fields, the, the condition of our fields. We did do, subsequent to this, we have done a roofing project, so that should be deducted from there. HVAC replacements, the cafeteria needs a significant investment, the gymnasium needs a significant investment. So it's, it's all outlined, those dollars would be outlined specifically in our facilities master plan. But off the top of my head, I know we need HVAC replacement, the gym needs upgrades, the field needs upgrades.
I was going to say that the field is probably the large bulk of, of the upgrades that need to be.
Yeah, we have an estimate about, of about $9.9 million to improve the fields.
And the auditorium that we need to replace too.
The auditorium.
That's a whole different ballgame there, yes. Thank you for that question.
I have a follow-up question as well. Facilities conditions, to bring them up to good conditions, looking at the right column, total budget, does, what is the definition of good condition? And does, do all of these include like, some of our schools may not have a central kitchen, right? Or a multi-purpose room? Or a library? So what is good condition?
Yeah, it's just to take.
How is it defined based on this dollar amount?
It's just to take the existing facilities and improve them into, into what would be deemed as a good condition. So it means that it's fully functional, the, it's, the electrical upgrades are done, the roof is in good condition, the HVAC is in good condition, the interior and exterior paint is in good condition, and, and exterior repairs are done. But no, this would not include the construction of any new buildings. So for example, there's no new performing arts center at the Bullis campus, right? That, that would be a different story.
And what was the estimated amount of state matching dollars we would qualify for? I don't recall that number.
Well, it was, we could, if we, if we were in line already, have, have accessed probably another $100 million.
It was a matching 80 to.
Yes, and we learned in, in about, no, just after the bond, or the Prop 2 passed, that those dollars were already spoken for. There you go.
Yes.
Yes. It is.
A lot of the inequity conversations we're having, the issue we run into with our community and raising enough bond funds because of our assessed property value, right, because the system that still favors wealthier districts, right?
Absolutely.
So this lawsuit that you see the district can be a part of is seeking to bring again equity to a process that has been inequitable over the years. So to hear that, and I said it directly in the committee to the chair, that it's, it's becoming a first in line problem. And that's still the case, so I think that's just why we continue to advocate for some equity at all levels, so.
Yes, thank you for noting that.
And Dr. Castro, I was able to pull up the facilities master plan to help maybe define what good means for you. So good rating corresponds to a condition score between 80 and 89. I don't know if that helps, but the scoring system is on a facilities condition index that the company went through. And so it's on an 80 to 89, which is, you know, like a B, if you will.
Thank you for that additional information. I, I know as a board, we've had conversations about construction, new construction, right? And the dream of having a kitchen at every one of our schools. So this tells me there's no new construction built into this total budget. It's just the 80 to 89 of what exists currently and not the dream of having kitchens, et cetera.
Correct.
Thank you.
So the next slide just shares a, a quick summary of the projects that have been completed here since, this is just since 2023. We certainly have completed more projects. You know, I, I would say that, that we are operating right now on a, a safety plan. Like when, when something is urgent, we address it with our facilities. So when, when we see significant roof leaks, when HVACs break down, we, we replace, we replace them and repair them. We'd like to get ahead of things and have a more proactive approach at some point. But right now, we're, we're addressing each issue as it comes forward.
And you may have seen some of the action items to close out some of these projects in the last couple of agenda meetings that we've done, board meetings.
So the next slide outlines the, the three campuses that the committee brought forward. So the, the three elementary campuses the committee brought forward, Lugo, Rosa Parks, and Wilson. And our facilities team identified what are some of the most significant facilities needs at those campuses. And then they, they do happen to be the three campuses that have the largest number, the, the largest number. And then they, they do happen to be the three campuses that have the largest number, the, the largest number of portable campus, portable classrooms, these three elementary sites. And you can see in order to bring those, uh, facilities up to good condition, uh, it's about 8.6 million dollars would, would need to be invested in. Lugo, Rosa Parks would need over 13 million dollars and Wilson would need 12.5 million dollars.
Can we clarify, because the question was brought up before, in the condition assessment, we talked about the portables. So if the portables are out of the equation, what, what does happen to the, to this number? I'm just curious.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
There are no portables at these, at this site, what happens to, to these numbers? Or, or is the, that assessment of the portables included in?
Oh, the assessment of the portables is included.
Right, so I'm, I'm just curious if we can get another layer of data to see if, if those are removed, um, what, what, what the number is as well.
Okay, yes, good question.
You know, I'm also recognizing that, um, as inflation and costs continue to rise, that the numbers could go in the wrong direction. But I just wanted to just, um, see what the.
Yeah, yeah, and that's another good point. I mean, you can take these numbers and, and add 3% at least over the year from a CPI increase. So the, these numbers are going up as we speak.
And just as a follow-up to that, for the portables, um, I'm looking at 10 portables, 14 and 15 portables. Um, I think a follow-up would be important to know how, how much space in these portables or maybe they're not used at all.
Uh, many of them are used for storage at this time.
For storage, but not for teaching and learning, not for instruction?
Many of them are used for storage or for auxiliary programs or for our after-school program.
So I think maybe that next step would be, what, what it costs to remove these, these portables, right? And I know that's not part of necessarily, um, I mean, I, I, I think it is part of the discussion, right? Looking at how do we make the school, um, evaluated fairly by removing the perhaps 10 portables that are not being used that are used for storage?
Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to add that I've never thought that the cost of bringing these schools up is really at the heart of this. So I think that that narrative needs to change because these other schools have significant improvements. They're, Washington has 14 million, other schools have numbers that are that and that. So that's, and when we say that, of course it's going to piss people off that we're not taking care of the schools. And that's not really the narrative here. So whatever the narrative is, I think we need to talk about what it is and not like, oh, you need to spend 13 million. Because we have to spend money on all the schools. So it's not that, so then what is it? And I think that's what people really want to know. Um, so I think that we should really focus on that because if we continue to talk about, you know, oh, it's because we need to spend 13 million, of course you're going to be pissed off. They want to go pass the bucket and go raise the money, because if that's all it is, well then we can fix it. So if that's not what it is, and I don't think it is, I think we need to come clean with what it is so that people understand.
I, I was going to say it for later to say this, this thing, because I've, I've requested that we stop focusing in on this part of it. Because when I see the numbers on the board for these school sites, my, my inclination is not, okay, let's close them. It's like, let's invest in, in the schools to, to that amount, right? That's why I want to know the true number without the portables, what the number is. Because whenever I see like need, my, my response is to meet the need, right? Um, so, and again, I think that's why there's a lot of anger in the community, just right, because of the discussion centered around this topic here. And it's not the right way to have this conversation because our, this is our, our homework here. Um, it's not our rationale for closure, this is really where the work starts to fit, to figure this part out. Um, so, you know, I, I know I've shared that a couple of times, and we have to take this off the table in how we are discussing this. Because it's not going to get us to a place as a board, and I'm, I'm hoping to get off the term, that's going to get us to a place where we could say yes to recommendation that, that makes sense for us just yet. So I, I get, I love that it's a part of the data set.
Yeah.
But I think it's a little overemphasized and, and, and it started to happen during the committee meetings. And then I think that's when some of the discussions came out about specific schools and the narrative is right, right now, out of our control. And we're having to try to roll it back because the board has discussed closure probably like maybe 10 times in my 12 years. But it was never about like us not having, not wanting to improve schools that need improvement. It was more about like keeping the lights on, maintaining quality programming, focusing on instruction, keeping class sizes within compliance with our contract. So I, I think that is, that's a valid point to say as was on the screen now. Because I think this is where, um, things sort of fell off track in, in the, in the process that was well-defined with about nine other metrics. But this one here was a, a real sticking point for, for me because I think this, this metric says something else than, than what it's being used for in this moment, if that makes sense.
And then my, my other concern is the cost saving. Uh, the operational cost is 4.2 million, something like that, 1.4 per elementary school.
Right.
So you're talking about 4.3 million is the operational cost. And to say that in the, in the big picture, you know, how much does that really help us budget-wise? And the answer to me that it's compounded, it's a lot. But I do think that when you could deeper analysis of what the true cost saving is, if there's any additional cost. Because, you know, to change a community's, you know, layout and it not be significant, then I think we really need to weigh the impact of closing those schools personally.
I think to, in, in that vein, it's like the improvement and benefit is significant. But the rationale to do so is like so pervasive that we really have no choice yet. So I think that's where, like, I'm wanting to hear, like, and I've read the whole thing now, I'm kind of one of those kids that. I'm, I'm wanting to still, still hear like.
Yeah.
This, this is an emergency if we don't act in this way. And these are the things that are really going to make the biggest impact. Again, with this equity teamwork and theme and theory applied to it, um, that says like, we need to do this by this date or else the building's going to fire.
Because we've been asked to make hard decisions before, or it's going to impact the community negatively. And we're going to take a shot as the board, because we are the board. And we've had to lay off teachers before in almost a hundred or whatever. But those were hard decisions that had to be made. Now, if this is not one of those types of situations, then I think we really need to, because I think the impact is self-evident. You don't have people come to these board meetings unless it's really affecting their lives, right? So we have people coming to this board meeting, uh, because it's affecting their lives. So then if we're going to make that type of decision, we need to be sure of the repercussions and the cost benefit analysis. Because if we're not, you know, we're affecting a lot of people when we don't have to.
I think one other thing, um, it, uh, that I'd like to add is a lot of this conversation, this data and these numbers that we're seeing is also, um, having us reflect on the, um, measure, the bond, right? The 80 million and, um, prioritizing how will we use those dollars? And the best way to ensure that, um, we address, one of these pages had it, we address a 240 million need, right? And I think, um, just looking at, uh, these three schools as an example, I mean, that's already 33 million. And we haven't addressed all of our other schools. So I think, you know, the challenge I'm having is, of course, this doesn't seem, you know, the, the impact to children, the impact to families. We've, we've heard it and we're, we're continuing to listen to those impacts. But also, um, I think the, the, the opportunity to be creative about 80 million? To fill in a void of 240 plus million to address and make sure that we invest appropriately in, um, improving our schools for students.
Yeah, and also calling out that the initial assessment, and when I got on the board, around like 2014, was 430 million in, in needs. We've reduced it significantly, but again, I, that, it's still at a number that's above and beyond our current bond capacity. Like I, I know Compton approved their bond to go on the ballot last night, it's going to be about 350 million dollars.
Wow.
Must be nice, right? Um, and they're building their third Ragdoo High School, right? That I, you know, part of the design team for that, so I, I know intimately, it's like, it, it'll be nice if we can bond at that capacity. Because that would like take out a, a lot of this, but we're, we're, we're not at that level yet. So I did want to recognize again, the tremendous amount of work to get us where we are now.
Yeah.
Um, recognizing where we were in the past with that half a billion dollar price tag looking at us, um, and, and making progress in, in that regard, so. But again, I think the, the, the numbers here that we have, I think are not as clean as I would like. Because I think, again, our ultimate goal as a board and a priority is, um, life without portables. Um, so I think if we look at, um, removal, but also the number without the portables, I'd be, I'd be curious to see how that impacts the, the overall amount to improve.
You know, just lastly to close this out, you know, it's very frustrating as a community member, not as a board member, but as a community member. To see that we continue to basically barely hold on in maintenance. Like we're basically painting, doing plumbing and fixing stuff. We're not building anything. And that's not right. And this is why, I get it, this is why we're involved in the lawsuit, but something needs to happen. We need to get creative. And I'm going to say, guys, because this is why I was supportive of that issue regarding the builders and us giving an incentive. Because that would have helped our ADA. There was a multiple factor that comes in there when you get 25 students and you get 13,000 per student and it's 350,000 a year. And you get it every year, every year. And that affects our school districts, and that could have been something we did to solve our problem, and we didn't. So we need to be held responsible when we make decisions like that, where we could have done something as a school district and we didn't. Because that could have helped the issue that's underlying. That and the other elephant in the room, when people take their kids to other districts. You know, we're in a fight here and the ADA is very important. And when you're part of this community, you're either invested in it or you're not. And if you're not invested in it, then you don't have a seat at the table because you don't care. That's the way I look at it. It's nice if you can take your kids somewhere else, but I think it's important for us to foster a more positive experience for people. Because, look, I've had and I've seen people and teachers go to other districts and then come back. Because the people that work here really care about the kids. But we need to figure out how we give them more tools and we give them more so that our students have more. Because our finished product as a company are seniors that graduate. And they have to compete against seniors from other high schools. And if they don't have the right tools, it's like sending a soldier to war and they got a water gun and the other guy's got an M16. That's it.
All right, if I can go to the next slide. We're going to quick, quickly go through this, I think that's.
Sure, yeah, and I know Terrence is going to share some more information, but just, uh, as we, the next couple of slides will talk about, um, the campuses and potential use. And, um, you know, that's the other part of this. So i- if and when the board were to make a decision, uh, around, uh, school consolidation, the next step would be to have some discussion around land use, which is, which is kind of part of this. And, and they're joined together, so we, we thought we'd talk a little bit about it. Uh, and Terrence, again, is the lawyer in the room, he'll be more specific. But, but when a, a district does have surplus property, they can choose to sell or lease that land. Uh, if a district chooses to lease it, they could lease it to a developer potentially. And, uh, that, that developer could use it to create staff housing, uh, which we did recently attend a CSB workshop around workforce housing. And, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Or below market rate housing as well, developers could do. Any revenue that's generated from a lease can be used as general fund dollars, the district can use it as they choose. If the district chooses to sell property, uh, any, uh, revenue generated from that sale must be, uh, used for capital improvements on existing campuses. So just a little bit of background information.
Next slide.
And the next slide.
This one shows just the acreage as well as the proximity to the metro. I think, um, developers are often attracted to property or areas where they can develop close to transportation. Um, so Hostler, Lugo, Rosa Parks, Wilson, uh, these are relatively close to the metro. Uh, and then the potential development in terms of square footage is also can be very attractive in terms of acreage and housing development.
And that would, that was data pulled from our CSBA workshop as part of our CSBA homework.
Yeah.
From the Center for Cities and Schools and, and the proximity to metro does impact the zoning as well.
Correct.
And that's just a, a workforce housing report that we reviewed while at that CSBA, um, workshop, but just a consideration in this process.
Uh, next slide, this continues, this is again, other property. I think there was a conversation with you, Dr. Castro, about looking at the adult school, as well as the pathway and central kitchen and Vista. Again, if, if we do consider these spaces, the proximity to metro is, is a little farther, so it's not as close. Um, so the space needs at the adult school, uh, they're still undetermined. Um, and so there's some implication in terms of co-location of students with adults. And then for pathway, we do have plans, I know that Dr. Martinez and I are talking about to reopen this program. Uh, and so the facility's in great condition, I know the board is really, you know, really focused on making sure that independent study programs and that we don't discount them as well. We want to make sure that we provide equity for, for these students as well. And then the central kitchen, um, I know that we've talked about scratch cooking. Um, and so, you know, space is still needed to prepare meals, especially for some of our elementary schools, uh, to deliver the food. And then Vista High School, you know, co-location of students at another site is also some considerations and implications that we have. But Vista High School is in great condition or good condition, if you will, based on the facilities master plan.
All right, I just got to jump in on this, this slide.
Go for it.
Because this slide is steeped in inequity in my mind. Because we're talking about programming at pathway of students that are at Promise have, um, you know, circumstances that will require a different type of programming. And to put them at a co-located site or remove their, their home base, I think is, um, deeply inequitable. The same for Vista, right? We understand the issues that students that are at Vista are facing, they need accelerated programming, they need a lot of other services that other schools don't provide. They need specialized teaching and counseling. So to, again, co-locate them, and we know sometimes co-location can be an issue, I, I think it, it's, it's a problem for me. I, I get that it's a, this piece of land that's there, but you also have to consider the, what the uses are. And again, this is what I, what I was talking about, what I, what I mentioned in the equity impact statement. It's like, that would put a red flag on school sites that would deepen inequity if we closed or, or changed their use. The adult school site, of course, is a different situation because that's a discussion that we've had over, over the years as far as like how to properly use that parcel of land. And all the issues at the old bank is, is what it is, has. Um, so for me, that's a little, a little different. But the other school sites where there, there are most vulnerable populations of students, even, that's also true for our adult school, our, our adult student campus as well. Like a lot of our, our, our students are, um, newcomers to the country, learning English or wanting to get their citizenship. So that, so displacement for them is, is also an issue. So again, so when I say talking about, um, you know, an equity analysis, it's not just the data of like how many acres in square feet it is. But what, what does that campus mean for a student and what does his absence also do for their, their life course as well? So I just wanted to, to consider that as we're looking at other, other properties, but just really understanding, um, the, the true, like, comprehensive profile of the, of these campuses. So I'm not really happy to see this list necessarily, unless there's like a comparable apples-to-apples alternative for these students. And I, I don't know that, that we have that, um, yet.
I'd like to follow up on this. I think, uh, consideration of other property to me meant, um, the report that we received was incomplete. Meaning all of the, um, properties that are part of our, um, our infrastructure and our service to students. And considering, um, other property, uh, just makes the, um, the impact that will potentially have when closing elementary schools. And considering other properties such as, it's my understanding, pathway is closed, right? We have zero students in pathway. And, um, uh, to Dr. Hardy's point, I, I, you know, concur and I agree that there are specific programs that we, as a board, value, um, in our community. And we invest in these different programs. But looking at the whole picture was important for me when we think about the possibility of closing any school. Closing any school is going to be an impact to children, to families, to all of our community. We are, you know, a very short, I don't know, five mile, three mile radius. So I think this was missing information with respect to what are other values that we have and where are our other students? And then, you know, just thinking about the pathway campus, if it's completely closed, if there are no students there right now. Reopening to provide those services, uh, perhaps thinking about reopening there or reopening at a co, co-site. Uh, to reduce what we know has been a challenge, staff, you know, the, the increase of cost of staff in different sites. So I think, to me, this was important to make the report a little more complete, to look at what are other facilities? What are other sites that we have that we should think about, um, with least impact? Uh, but in no way, um, moving away from our values and from our commitment to support, um, students at Vista, to support students in adult school or pathway.
And to clarify, we, the pathway campus is closed, but it doesn't mean we do not have independent study students. We still have students that are on independent study. And now the pathway campus, the plan to reopen is to give the independent study, independent study students a place where they can also meet with their teachers as well. Instead of the comprehensive school campus where there's some challenges as well.
I just wanted to say that, I, I, when I talk about this slide, I don't mean that I'm um, opposing the request to consider other sites. What I'm just saying is I think it's like, when I see, when I see this, this uh, this list, we have to like call out some of the obvious uh, challenges with, with these specific sites. And I, when I guess, when I see other property, I'm thinking about like all of the school sites and, and what that looks like as well. So, I want you to think for like I was like um, opposed to your request.
I would just like to add that um, you know, when we closed down Pathway, you know, that was a, another hard decision we had to made, make. Um, but, you know, going into when we're talking about equity, you know, we need to have a space for students in independent study. A space to, you know, collaborate with, with um, fellow students because that's another com- important component about students, they need to be able to collaborate and have co-learning with other students, you know? That's why even in, in, and the doctrine before was that in high school, in secondary school, students sit in rows. Not anymore, we encourage teachers to have tables so that students can work in groups, um, socialize, you know, get that component of the learning experience. But what, um, this issue of um, closing schools, you know, it didn't start recently. It actually came, you know, to the, with the previous superintendent, you know, it was something that was looming. And we, as a board, were told constantly and during previous board repres- presentations, that question was looming. That, you know, if things continue in the past, we might be looking into closing schools, so here we are today. Uh, that threat that we knew that was coming. And one conversation I had with the supr- the previous superintendent was about reshuffling um, some of our um, schools. Because I always brought up the question about, you know, the location where Vista High School was at. You know, Vista High School's on the right road, it's like in a little cove on the side of the city and, you know, students are walking towards that way and you have a lot of eighteen-wheelers and box trucks uh, passing through there. So, you know, if moving forward, depending on how many, because we do have different scenarios, you know, we can always find a different location for Vista. But at the same time, it's a business in a very perfect condition, so it's like, would that, would that be an adequate and responsible decision to make? Um, but in terms of the adult school in Atlantic, you know, that's one property that it's um, been a headache. And not so, not so long ago, there was an accident um, with the um, with the facility. And we don't know what, what happened because, you know, it's, it's, it's on a main road and, you know, it tends to be, it's a perfect spot for it to be vandalized. And, you know, it, it is something that we, we've talked about um, before, but definitely um, you know, when we think about um, Vista and high, uh, uh, Vista High School and the adult school. And some of the new spaces that might be available for these programs, you know? Um, these could be ideal because Vista High School's student population is not that big. And if you relocate them, then you can po- we can possibly relocate them with the adult school in one location divided with some sort of divi- divisive, um, divided, my bad. Um, but Pathway definitely, for me, you know, that's a location that I wouldn't um, consider tweaking around. Because it's, for me, it will be ideal if we bring that program back and give that space for our students to be able to work collaboratively and have that person-to-person, one-on-one teaching experience with their teachers. Um, and that's all the point I wanna make regarding that.
May I make another, um, I'm looking at two slides back um, and the potential future land uses. Um, so what I'm seeing here is sell or lease land, um, if um, that has been declared surplus land. I think we're having this conversation because of the obvious, right? The um, declining uh, enrollment, declining ADA. Um, and for all of these groups of students that we serve, we do receive ADA with the exception of um, adult school, right?
Yes.
However, I know that as a board, we've continued to, to commit and, and value adult school. And so, we have an issue with the ADA, um, less dollars, less funding for our schools. So, in consideration of these other properties, um, we can also engage in maybe future ideas and future planning on how do we have sites that might generate revenue for our district that does not impact children, right? That help generate some form of revenue without impact any one of our students.
Yes, yeah, and that, that's the other side of it, so not only might we have savings through closing schools, but there is the opportunity to generate revenue, which is unknown until we go into that exploration.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, um, can we go to the next slide, the next slide after that? Okay, so uh, Dr. Martinez is gonna talk about the neighborhood impact. I know that we've also looked at the number of students who have been living outside and potentially could be impacted if we were to consolidate these schools.
Yes, we, we know it's gonna be a big impact to the entire city, uh, we just wanted to provide some information on how it would affect the neighborhood. So if you look at this data, a hundred and forty-six students that attend Lugo live in that direct area. Um, the rest are living outside of the boundaries of Lugo, not outside of Lynnwood Unified, outside of the Lugo area. So their homeschool is another homeschool. And if you look at Rosa Parks, it's a hundred and fifty-three, and Wilson, it's two hundred and seven. But again, it, we understand it'll impact the entire um, community, but these are the numbers of the students that live within that area that would directly impact. And then next slide. And then this, this other slide is just another breakdown of the students, because there was a question on special education and the number of students that it would impact. And these are mild to moderate students, so our, our other students that are CLM or have more severe, they will not be impacted because they're not in these schools. So this is just the breakdown of the number of students. So at Lugo, it would be thirty-three students, Rosa Parks, eighteen, and Wilson, forty-seven students that will impact.
Alright, I think we're, any questions before we move on to the many scenarios that we're gonna be sharing with you now? Alright, so I think um-
Before we move on, um, there's a consensus, does anyone need a break? Break? No? We can move forward?
Alright. Okay, so we have, it's not A to Z, but it's A to G, so-
I think we had an H in there.
H in there, A to G, so we have several scenarios that we wanna make sure that the board is briefed on, so that way um, at least we've gone through at least as much as we can, and there may be some scenarios that we haven't thought of as well, but these are some combinations that we're thinking about. So the first scenario, A, is, is closing the three elementary schools beginning in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, and these are the savings that um, Dr. Jenson helped put together. And again, if you wanna share a little bit more about the savings from twenty-six, twenty-seven?
They're just rough estimates of approximately how much would be saved across a three-year span. And then what is not included here would be if any additional revenue was generated from the land, I would say in about three years out, we would potentially be able to generate lease revenue. Um, so this number will be adjusted in that way. So, while it doesn't address our full deficit spending issue, i- it does assist with, with making a dent in it.
And that's one and a half million per campus?
Yes.
Yes, alright, let's go to the next slide?
And this just shows a, a, a impact to people, so um, Mr. Cercos was able to pull the total number of staff members working at each site and the number of staff members that would potentially be displaced. Uh, or, or no longer have a position at that site, and then the general education students who would be impacted. And then as um, Dr. Martinez mentioned, the, these schools support our mild-moderate SDC students, so not our, our CLM, our medically fragile students. Uh, but those are the numbers of students who would be impacted in this scenario.
Alright, let's go to the next slide. So scenario B is two elementary schools. Um, and obviously, again, the math, one point five for each school, so you get savings in twenty-six, twenty-seven, a three million uh, total. And so that would add up to nine million for the three-year um, impact on deficit spending. Next slide. These were the two scenario B recommended elementary schools, Lugo, Wilson. The staff, the general education students impacted and the SDC students again. Um, but again, just to emphasize that declining enrollment could result in the need to close another campus in the future. And then move students a second time, which is what we really want to avoid doing for any of our students. Um, next slide. So scenario C is if we just to, were to close one elementary school. Obviously, one point five million for each year, we would still have a three-year impact of three million on deficit spending. Next slide, please. And that would be just one school, Lugo Elementary School, the staff, and then the general education students impacted and the SDC students impacted. Next slide. Okay, so you wanna go with Dr. Jenson's scenario?
Sure, so this would be, yeah, if, if the decision was to um, move these closures back to the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, so across the next three years, then we would just lose that savings of four point five one year, so it would be a, a nine million dollar savings across the next three years. And then we would just need to have some discussion on whether or not to invest in significant capital improvements at any schools that were potentially planned to close. So that's something that, that uh, I would hope the, the board would, would provide some direction on if, if we made a decision about we're potentially gonna close a school. You know, what kinds of facilities improvements would we continue doing at that school site, knowing that we might close it in the future? So just something to consider.
That would be if we were to wait an, a year.
If we delayed it a year, yes, we'd have to have some discussion around capital improvements.
Correct, and then, next slide. This is the number of students and staff that would be impacted again, based on the current numbers that we currently have. Those numbers may be reduced based on our projections as well.
Yes, and then the only suggestion here would be that if, if uh, the closures were pushed out another year, we might ra- make the recommendation not to enroll any new TK or K students at that campus. So if the decision was made to close school A, we would suggest perhaps we don't enroll any new students in Kinder or TK there to, to move them over to what their new homeschool would be in advance. To have a lo- a, a lower impact down the road.
Next slide. So this is the next scenario, this is if we were to close two elementary schools, postpone it until the next school year as well. Um, so you can see the dollar amount hasn't changed, it's still three million, but that gets put in twenty-seven, twenty-eight and twenty-eight, twenty-nine with a three-year impact uh, of six million dollars on deficit spending. Um, and next slide, I think you can kinda get the, the pattern in here, this is the scenario for E. Uh, the number of staff, students impacted, SEC students. Uh, again, reminder that we would not enroll any new TK or K in twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, keep going, the next slide, please. Scenario F is if we were to postpone and only close one elementary school next year. Dollar amount remains the same, um, next slide. Then this is the staff, this would be Lugo, um, and then again, not enrolling any new TK or K kids in next uh, fall. Next slide, please, this is scenario G, uh, which is one elementary school um, this coming year, one elementary school the following year, and one elementary school on the third year. Yes?
Yes, it should be, yes.
You're right.
You're right.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
That's correct. Yeah, yes. So just for the record, so then again, the savings would be one point five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, three in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then four point five in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, because we would have three elementary schools.
So a total, so a total of nine.
Yeah, who needs AI? Next slide, please. Um, again, this is the staff that would get impacted year by year. Again, based on our current staff, current number of students, current number of mild-mod. Um, and then the same recommendation is to not enroll any new kid, new TK or K students. Next slide. Um, so the last scenario is if we were to close no schools. Um, so, so again, you know, we've stressed this enough, I think programmatic challenges with small schools based on our ideal um, K, TK to sixth environment, and then the bond funds, we have not issued out the eighty million dollar bond. So, you've seen how much need we have across the campuses. I know Dr. Hardy also mentioned, when you see the slide that has the campuses, it makes you want to do that. We, we want to fix all of these issues as well. Um, but we wanna prioritize, so, and then we still have ongoing challenges with deficit spending. So that's the last scenario that we wanted to make sure that the board uh, is also, you know, briefed on. If I can go to the next slide?
Uh, before we move on to the next slide, I have one question for regarding, so the, the number of impacted teachers. So, I know for sure, when it comes to um, teacher displacement, that is based on seniority, right? Um, and teachers with the most seniority will probably be moved to another campus, depending on how many campuses are closed, if any are closed. My question is, but on a ballpark estimate, district-wide, how many teachers will be displaced?
Well, it depends on what is decided, so I think we looked at, I wanna say it was like fourteen teachers at um, Rosa Parks, fourteen teachers at Wilson, and ten teachers at Lugo. Now, the numbers that we shared on there with the staff included principal, secretary, custodial, uh, instructional assistants. But in regards to teachers, it's a lot less than what was on the slide. So, the slides included like thirty-something, forty, forty-eight, whatever it was on the slides, but that includes all staff, certificated and classified that would be affected. So-
One point five?
The one point five that was shared by uh, Dr. Jenson was the reduction of single positions at the school.
Not certificated?
Not teach, not certificated.
Because if you're saying fourteen, for example, certificated, you're talking, if you, if each one makes an average of ninety thousand, you're talking about over one point two mil, something like that.
Yeah, but we're still absorbing those, I mean, we're still moving those teachers to another site, so there's no savings there.
Well, that's my question, my wondering was like, are we eliminating any teachers?
Oh, we, based on, based on the decline in enrollment?
Or just through attrition?
Just through attrition right now, and decline in enrollment.
Nothing to do with-
Nothing to do with this, I mean, this, this would be something separate. We already have plans to reduce staff in order to-
Again, I think that's another important point, because people think we're gonna get rid of the school, we're gonna get rid of all the teachers. And the other part is, I, I, if there was any consolidation of teachers or positions, it'd be, because I know there are gonna be some classes that are one and a half. Well, I don't know, I think we have a combo class for those, right?
Mm-hmm.
So then, I mean, it's gonna be attrition, that, that's gonna happen no matter what.
So, regardless of whether there's a closure or no closure, there's gonna be reductions. So I wanna be very clear with that, because we have decline in enrollment and, and, and everything like that. So that's already been identified in our fiscal stabilization plan that we're looking to reduce. And normally, normally, uh, the reductions are done through attrition. People that retire, people that resign, people that don't return, it's usually by attrition. Last year, we had to lay off a few teachers. Um, right now, we're still looking at staffing, so we're looking at, and we're gonna be sending something out to our staff to see who's intending to separate at the end of the year. So we can have better understanding on what direction we need to take with our staff. But, I just wanna be very clear, regardless of whether there's closures or not, there's gonna be a reduction of staff.
Yeah, that was, that was my concern actually, because, you know, uh, on average, um, elementary school has about sixteen classes, right? On average, fourteen, maybe twelve. My concern was like, we were gonna displace twelve teachers. Um, but my understanding is that that's not the, the scenario, we're not gonna, because the school closed, if a school were to close, we're not gonna lay off potentially twelve teachers.
No, because those students have to go to another school. So, so depending on where the schools land, then teachers would follow, depending on the school, so-
Correct.
We don't anticipate that happening because of the, of any closure, that's not gonna, that's not gonna happen because of a closure.
So we're doing, we know anticipate that we're gonna have more teachers than we do classes, we're gonna have the same amount of classes, depending.
If the, if the, if, as we're looking at decline in enrollment, we're gonna have less classes next year again. You know, we've been having less classrooms every year since, since I've been here. So we've, we've been reducing staff for years, it's just hasn't been a layoff, it's just been through attrition. We just have, by the, by the amount of people that leave, that's what we reduce, we just don't fill those positions. And we're hoping that that happens again this year as we kinda, kinda move forward, but we won't know until a little bit later on.
And Carlos, temporary contract teachers is what we've been like to fill those vacancies.
So we have some, some-
Emporied contract.
Temporary contract.
How many of those temporary contract teachers do we currently have? I think it's always important to know.
I don't have that number because we just recently hired a few, because we moved some people into, I would say, we probably have a good forty? I would say we probably have a good forty, secondary and middle, and elementary.
And they're like year-to-year restricted dollars as well. My, my question, I know one of the things I was brought up in the community is that we haven't reduced district-level staff, can you speak to that reduction as well?
We have been reducing district-level staff, we reduced, we've reduced assistant directors, we've do, we've reduced coordinators. Yes, when, with the passing of Dr. Nigle, we did not replace that position, so we reduced an assistant superintendent position. So district-level staff has been reduced significantly in the last three years, so.
I have, and looking at these different scenarios, I am also wondering, we didn't get a scenario or dollar amount for the savings for closing Hostler, or the recommendation, or the, by the committee, right, to potentially close Hostler. So I'm wondering where that fits, and then the other piece is, at the start of today's presentation, we talked about possible savings through the possibility of school closures, but also looking at contracts, and I'm wondering if we can have a, you know, an idea on what, what would that look like to, to perhaps not renew contracts that are not directly serving children in the classroom, right? If, if we can think about other creative ways staying away from closing any schools. So those are my two follow-ups.
So the Hostler question, a great question, thank you for that. All of, the, the entire Hostler campus will just move over, so there won't be a reduction. So, for example, if we talked about closing Lugo, there will be staffing reductions, because, for example, they wouldn't need a principal to go with them to the new school, right? But Hostler, the entire Hostler campus will transfer over there, so there isn't any significant reduction in operational costs.
So no reduction, but then that leaves the building, right?
It leaves the building, and yeah, we don't.
And then that leaves a conversation of what we might do as next steps.
And we don't need to make the, the investment in the facilities there either.
I was thinking that wasn't true, but it is true, because then the Linwood Bullis campus moves to the new high school.
A little shuffle.
There's nothing there right now, so there's no support staff that's being paid. So then I see how that goes.
Yes, I'm sorry, Dr. Custer, your second part of your question?
Contracts, I know we, we talked about the need to revisit contracts and look at which contracts are outcome-based contracts, look at which contracts we may need to eliminate that could be cost savings.
And as part of our budget development process that we do annually, we, I know that Dr. Jansen and her team always works with our divisions and departments to say, do you need this for this year? Do you need this for next year? Do you, like, what, can we eliminate this, can we, so?
And ninety percent of our contracts have been moved over to restricted funds where impossible. So the, the, those are really separate funds. Our, our unrestricted general fund really only pays for the basics, utilities, which shows as a contract, our legal fees, our trash, our water, the things that keep the lights on, our, our, our insurance to protect the district. It's the basics.
And I would add that some of these contracts are also programs for students, and so we are trying to avoid canceling some of these contracts that directly impact kids.
One last question, going back to Hostler. So obviously, there will be a cost in moving Hostler over to the Bullis campus. Is that, do we have an estimate on that now, or is that something we're going to look more into once we get to it?
Yeah, we don't have an estimate now, but that's a good point, we were actually just talking about that today. If we, if we think that we can take that work on ourselves, or if we'll have to cost it out, so we're working on that. Great question.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to turn this over to our legal counsel, who's going to go over the potential future land use, along with the seven eleven, he's got roughly fifteen minutes, maybe less.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Let's, let's beat that by a few, okay, good. So this is a look ahead, essentially, to what would be in place and what options would exist if indeed schools are closed. The education code provides for an advisory committee that essentially its purpose is to review property that's owned by the district and determine what is excess or surplus, because it's not needed for school purposes. And so.
David, can we?
Next slide. Next slide. It's called a seven eleven committee because it has very specific requirements as to who can attend, and it must include at least, I mean, who must participate, and it has to have at least seven to eleven members. And they should represent the community, they should also hit these various categories that are listed here. Those are basically straight out of the statute. The idea would be you get a fair and accurate cross-section of your community, your staff, and other experts, and individuals who can help make an informed decision in regard to the use of your property. Next slide. This, these are the obligations set forth in the law. You, you look at the data, look at projected enrollment, identify excess property. It would look very similar to the process that was done to the optimization committee. There'd be some, you know, different nuances and some specific things that are looked at, because you're looking at a different use of the property at this point, as opposed to sort of a staff-focused number, but very similar general process. You have to create a list for what would be priority, or the committee must, has to circulate that. You have specific topics that must be considered, like childcare. There's this, this concept of determine limits of acceptable use for surplus place, so it's basically placing of boundaries on what can be used based on the community needs and circumstances. Both the rules and, you know, just kind of community acceptance, so to speak, you know, a, a certain use in a certain area may comply with zoning, but not fit the neighborhood, so to speak, and so.
Elevated lawyer speak into.
So ideally, well, I didn't get to the end, Mr. Carter. Ultimately, it looks at the land, it tries to make as an informed decision as it could in regard to all the possible uses of the land, so there's got to be some homework involved, and you got to have experts on there to help. But you're supposed to get some insight from really everybody, all the stakeholders. Figure out what would be best overall to use that land, and then make a recommendation to the board, which is only recommendation, not binding, it's ultimately the board's decision as to what to do with it. But this is your research-focused group, cross-section of the community, look into it, come up with some good ideas, and let you know what they think.
Mr. Gallagher, I have a question. The membership of the seven eleven, it's anywhere between seven to eleven members, and I'm reading the different descriptions of the seven members listed here. So does the composition of the rest of the members, is that a decision of the board, a discretion of the board of if we chose to have member eight, nine, ten, and eleven?
I don't think there's a limit on the number of members that can serve. There may be practical implications of that in regard to its functioning, but anybody above the eleven would be advisory even to the committee. They couldn't, they wouldn't be a functioning part of the committee, it's eleven members, so it's capped at that.
At eleven.
I probably wasn't clear when I first said, you're going to appoint others, but they're not going to be decision-makers on that committee, they're just be attending.
So we can appoint, for example, this list does not include a student, and we're, you know, we want to have like student voice, we can invite a student to be potentially a part of this committee. We can invite an expert in urban planning, or like an expert in, if we move into like workforce, I know the slides ahead, we're going to have a conversation of that, we can include experts in here, and student can be a part of this committee, correct?
So to be, to be clear, eleven members total has to hit those points. You can invite others to participate in the committee process, but they would not be members of the committee.
Thank you.
Hence, seven, eleven. But it's not, it's not, well, never mind, next slide please. I was going to make a bad joke about slurpees, but Dr. Jansen already heard it, so I just decided to skip it.
No, 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 no dad jokes, please, no dad jokes.
Okay, so this is what happens if surplus or exempt land is declared, or you, you need to figure out what to do with it. There's basically three avenues. It's either going to be covered by the Surplus Lands Act that applies to all governmental agencies that have land, or it's going to be exempt, either under that act or other acts. And, you know, basically the definition is you have to make a finding as a legislative board that this is extra property that you don't need for your agency's use. There's nineteen exempt categories, not a lot of them directly apply to you. Next slide please. So we're skipping over a bunch of them, there's a couple that, that could be used. If so, you would not need to comply with all the requirements of bidding, notification, things like that you have to do under the, under the act, and this is basically the key one that's in the act itself, which is a lease, joint use by others. There's another one, next slide please. Just general overview, because all these decisions are going to come to you later with the committee. This is an exemption relatively recent, not found in the act, but it's in the ed code, and it basically allows for, you know, what's known as workforce housing, as long as you meet these criteria, which is you got to have ten units, fifty-five-year lease with deed restrictions for low to moderate income renters, and then you have to have at least thirty percent lower income. And a hundred percent of them have to be rented to either district employees, local public employees, or just members of the public, but you have to follow a procedure, where first it's offered to employees, then other employees go down the line. Next slide please. So this has been, this is basically kind of a cutting-edge use of property, I think, relative in the history of school districts in California. That's one examples is Jefferson High School, hundred and twenty-two units, seems to have worked well. And there's been at least policy recommendations and decisions, I don't think there's any empirical data, but the idea is, is it furthers keeping teachers around, staff retention, and ideally, you're providing housing, you know, for, for folks in a very impacted, high-rent and high-property-value area. All right, next, next slide please.
I would like also share that besides Jefferson Union High School, LAUSD has also been doing a lot of staffing, housing, especially the most known one is the one that was built by Gardena High School in the city of Gardena.
So I'll go through this relatively quickly, which is if you end up being in the Surplus Lands Act, because you decide, or the decision that is made is to not follow one of those other exempted properties, you have to follow a pretty strict set of requirements that are laid out here. There's a lot of letters up there, but it basically, you got to offer it to lower-income agencies, they get a chance. The Naylor Act requires that you require, you, you offer the sort of recreational use portions. It's a very small percentage of your properties, I think, so it's very unlikely to, you know, be something that is, where a right to purchase is exercised. Notices go out, you have to wait after that happens. Should you get responses to that that are interested, there's a timeframe to negotiate, and you have to follow those steps. So there's a number of steps that are laid out, similar, but much lower number of steps to deal with if you're going to lease without an option to purchase. But ultimately, either way, you go through a competitive bidding process, we go to the next slide. Sort of the opposite of the lowest responsible bidder, it goes to the highest responsible bidder. The idea is you're getting the best market value for, for the property, if you end up making a decision to do something like that. Typically, I think what you see, or a trend, this ultimately a policy decision, so I'm just throwing it out there, but you generally see leases, you know, real property leases, a lot of times relating to housing, but can be other development uses, and the people you will see responding to these notices and the people you interact with are, are developers that have experience in working oftentimes with school districts on, on projects. You can seek a waiver, I forgot to mention that, if you end up going into that process with the state, sometimes you can get them, sometimes you can't. Next slide please. We can keep going, next slide please. Couple of things that came up at prior meetings, how am I doing? Related to charter schools, there were some references to some of the members of the public in public comment, and I think the general issues or concerns raised was how would this affect the charter school, or how would the charter school affect facilities of the district? And basically, the rule under laws, you have to share your facilities fairly with student, with the charter school students. The charter school students are to be treated exactly like district students, that's sort of basically the overarching rule. An obligation the district has is you have to make facilities available to them that's enough to accommodate their in-district students, and that, those need to be in a condition that's reasonably equivalent to what you, that district students have and are learning in. And then there's some obligations about them being contiguous, et cetera. It's an annual process that you're currently, through an agreement, avoiding for this and the next year, having gone through it in the previous year. That's that Prop thirty-nine, you guys, you're familiar with that process, you've been through it. Next slide please. So there were questions about, well, what happens if there's a school closure, how's that relate to the charters? There used to be a law that says you are obligated to offer any land deemed surplus or in excess of what you need to perform your educational functions to the charter. They basically had a first priority. That law no longer exists, so there is no priority. They would be a land use decision stakeholder like anybody else in regard to using a particular That being said, their rights under the government code and under the Prop thirty-nine standards, they still apply. They're still in place, and so you always have to adhere to those obligations. So if there's any questions on the charter or anything else, I'm happy to answer them.
You mentioned the district, district can request a waiver on this process. I'm assuming that is for decisions of sale.
It's from the competitive bidding aspect of the sale, so you would apply to the state.
And we're not happy with the bids that came in or the offers to sell, the waiver does what?
Well, the waiver is essentially a waiver from the system of, of competitive bidding. Like, you, it essentially is similar to a lease-leaseback, for example, construction project. So you don't have to go through that notice and review bid opening, highest responsible bidder. If you're able to demonstrate to the state that the deal you're getting works, and it's good for the district, and, you know, good for, for your students, et cetera, you can be exempted.
I guess what I'm trying to ascertain is, is if a district decides to sell the property as opposed to leasing it, and let's say a charter school comes in and they are the bidder looking to purchase, can the district then say, no, we don't want to sell it to you?
Not because they're a charter, you know, there'd have to be some other reasons. You know, ultimately, you have the legislative power as the elected board to make property decisions in the best interest of the district. So if there were some reasons why that transaction didn't work, you know, you'd have, you wouldn't be bound to enter into it. But, you know, it couldn't be that.
You'd have to make, make a case that, other than it being a charter, that you are not willing to accept the sale. I'm leading you on purpose, so hopefully you follow along with that. The, the other question that I'm asking related to that is on timing. Is there a specified time where the seven eleven committee must be in place to decide surplus land outcomes? Or, and if not, does it trigger any other aspects of, of the law that could maybe have the land be taken away from the district, for example?
Uh, no, I mean, in a sense of, the committee is generally run for the purpose of most efficiently dealing with your property, because you're going to have oversight, maintenance, you know, costs associated with having large amounts of surplus property. All the deadlines sort of run forward from when the decisions are made, you know, if there's a decision made to lease, sell, whatever, use the property. So those deadlines that we generally covered there are, are really the only ones that apply. You have practical, realistic, I think, timeframes, which is these costs you're carrying in the interim. I think you also have an interest, to the extent you can, to as quick. I think you also have an interest, to the extent you can, to as quickly, you know, and efficiently determine the best use for the property. And so, you know, it would be your own internal timeline, but not a external legal deadline.
And it's only triggered after we've decided that we, well, declared that we do have surplus land, so this work can't be done ahead of a school closure conversation, for example.
That's correct, and you know, even in the process of the of the evaluation, you can make a decision to do nothing with the property, provided it lines up with the best interests of the district. Or you can, you know, there can be legislative findings and determinations that, you know, holding it for a particular, you know, purpose for future use is, you know, in accord with best interest of the district. You have a wide amount of discretion as to what to do with it. I think the limitations in that discretion are more practical and economic.
Yeah.
And, you know, achieving the whole ultimate objective that's sort of triggered by why you're closing a school in the first place.
I think that's part B of my question to that, and that there isn't, is there a risk to a district holding on to a surplus land for a determined amount of time that that after the time has expired, the district loses the ability to decide what happens with that land?
No, no, it's your land, essentially, and, you know, I think there's, generally the reason why you mainly see leases for these types of projects is land is exceptionally valuable, and, you know, you don't see a lot of agencies selling it. And, you know, it's the same reason that properties get passed through families, generation to generation.
Correct.
And so I think, other than making the most effective, highest, best use of your property as soon as possible, I think there's no real great policy interest in sort of expediting. So having property for a long time, not a bad thing, doesn't create any problems for you, except for those costs you carry.
But there are societal impacts if we have that property and leave it vacant for a long time as well.
Well, absolutely, for the neighborhood, for example, around it.
Correct.
Exactly. Those are the practical things.
To be clear, I might ask you these questions that, these are things that I know, but I wanted to make sure that we have it be stated out loud, so the community also knows that this is what, essentially what we'll be dealing with if we decide to declare surplus land. So thank you for the exercise of responding to my questions.
And, you know, one thing, too, that only tangentially relates to this is, you know, there's often a perception in the public that, you know, that the charter operates in some way, sort of, you know, at the direction of the school. They really have a statutory right to the property that they get, and it's a very involved process where they end up being, and so, you know, they're entitled to use that property, you're obligated to provide it, and, you know, it's a balance of those things, is how it plays out the way it does, and you've done a good job, I think, in, you know, working with them. And, you know, I think we would expect you'd continue to do as you've done.
And we say that it was against our will, and it is no economic benefit for us doing so.
Yeah, it's actually contrary economically to you, but, you know, it's sort of a, goes with the territory, cost of doing business, and, you know, I think you guys have handled it very well.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up question, and I think it's part of this conversation, just clarifying question. Once we've declared, if we declare surplus land, it's at the discretion of whether or not we have a plan, but it's in our district's best interest to have a plan of what will occur with the land with respect to if we want to develop a community center, if we want to have like a community resource center or or a hub, we can declare the possibility of surplus land and then move into that plan in that direction, in maybe a five-year plan if we don't have the funds to move in that direction, is that is that correct? Or do we have, and I think Dr. Hardy asked this question, are there dangers and concerns that if we declare surplus land, then our land is at risk of potentially being bitted or taken for other?
Not anymore. The law has changed. I think so to that point of like the cost, which is why surplus land is usually offered up in sale or lease because the cost is then transferred to the next party. So if we lease it, then the developer is now responsible for all the costs to maintain and develop it, so there's not necessarily a cost for that part of it. It becomes, like I said, the issue of like how, what is, and a vacant lot in the middle of a city due to that that neighborhood? And we're then considering costs for surveillance, costs for security for garden, garden dirt, basically.
Yeah.
So that's, those are, those are the other soft costs that you get, the longer it sort of, sort of plays out. So part of, part of my role in my nine-to-five is master planning, and this very thing comes up all the time, is the, the, the soft cost of land being underutilized in this way, and the longer it goes on, those costs sort of escalate. So the best-case scenario is to transfer those costs elsewhere in a way that either one time in the sale provides revenue to the district, or over the life of the lease provides revenue as well.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that, and, you know, that was my thought about having a plan, and I know that 7-Eleven committee would then come in to develop a plan because in addition to, and I'm in agreement with, like, if if there's, if we're moving in that direction of like leasing or, you know, a way to generate revenue, but also like the impacts, the societal impacts that you mentioned, but the deteriorating and the depreciation of some of these properties if we don't transfer, as you said, Dr. Hardy, to that responsibility to a leased party. Thank you for that.
Not to extend the conversation, but I'll just add a quick note that as districts are closing schools, insurance agencies are are placing higher premiums on districts that have schools that are sitting vacant because of the the issue. So we could see our insurance rates go up if we allow the property to sit vacant.
Yeah, the depreciation comes with a school sitting in its current state without any kind of development. So like, again, those are costs that you would essentially pass off, like, for example, if there's consistent around closing hospital, for example, that's ten acres of a site that would sit vacant, and you sort of think about what ten acres of empty vacant site means at a park that we know has challenges. So I'm concerned about that site in the, in the like immediate term of like what that means to this surrounding neighborhood. So, so in essence, in my mind, us not acting expediently, then we're, in my mind, responsible for negatively impacting this neighborhood around hospital, for example.
And Dr. Castro, if if we were to use our land and create community-based organizations, that doesn't require us to declare it surplus because it's already our property?
So we could, if we were to identify a space, we could already start creating a lot of the work that's already happening through community schools, right? But creating community hub or organizations that come in and provide additional services to our students, to our families in one of these located spaces, right?
If it's a district-owned property, yes.
Correct, and one of those leases that we put up there, you know, if the people that you're leasing to fit those categories, then it allows you to avoid theming it surplus.
Correct.
You're essentially exempt. You know, this is a very extreme example, but this notion of property, and the two high-rises that are downtown by Staples Center are like just a very patent, very obvious example of, you know, what happens when you have vacant property. And it's insane, actually, you go down there and and see it.
That's a view from my desk, unfortunately.
They can't get a buyer. I mean, that's like some of the most valuable property that exists, you know, in Southern California, and they can't get someone to buy it because of how much it will cost to deal with what's been left.
Superintendent, are we finished with this item?
For President, we are complete with our presentation. Thank you for your time, and thank you for really your dialogue and really engaging in this conversation, so I think we're on to the next item.
Yes, next item is.
Mr. President, sorry about that. I did have a final question on this last presentation. May I proceed with my question? Yes, it's very short. On the slide of review for additional information, I think one of my colleagues asked about the community schools the last time, and I'm just curious if there is additional information, if there's a possibility of school closure, how much funding might we, does that funding follow our students to the potential new side? Do we lose that funding? Because I know we're on year three of community schools, of a year-five, twenty-four-million-dollar grant, so I think that was just additional information.
Dr. Martinez has has that information for you.
Yes, we do unfortunately lose the funding.
We lose the funding.
We do lose the funding because it was given to per school, so if a school closes, then we do lose that funding, and it's about two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand for Lugo for year one and year two, because we have two years left of the grant, we're in year three, and about two-hundred-and-fifty for Wilson and Rosa Parks, so.
Per year.
Per year, for the next two years. So we lose about eight-hundred-thousand for next year and over six-hundred-thousand for the following year.
So we would lose, okay, so we would lose that if we proceed with closing?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you for the clarification.
So I, for me, I just want to quickly on my soapbox after hearing the the entire presentation. I personally don't feel closer to a rationale that I'm okay with saying yes to or or no to yet at this moment, because a couple of things in the presentation, I kind of highlighted a lot of them. But again, I think the equity analysis is still is still missing. We need more time to really apply our framework of equity access and justice to this decision-making process, it's not there. I think it should be a radically student-centered approach within the confines of our equity I think that the scenarios are, let me start over in saying, I want to acknowledge all the work that you all did to come up with this very robust presentation and all the work that you did to gather data to present the scenario. My concern with the scenarios is that it's basically the same scenario timed differently, but not another option that we're considering. We're still stuck on the idea of closing schools, but we haven't explored all options to address the deficits that we're seeing. Again, we have neighboring districts that are doing things that are considered best practices, from realignment to enrollment to partial closure of school sites. If you have, as kept as ten acres, they've taken five to make it a park or or housing. So I think there's a, there's a lot of other options that we can consider. Then when I say scenarios, I mean other like alternatives to the the present recommendation, which is, which is closer. The second thing, the issue that I have, I think it's the timing is is way too fast as far as this year, and even in my mind, next year, because I think we need to do a little more study of the demographic, new feeder patterns, and the way that students walk, for example, the the staff impacts, even getting a better assessment now in my mind, knowing that our facility assessment in the current form included portables that we, that the board has stated as a priority, we want to remove. And secondarily to that, looking at sort of where we want schools to go, I think making schools good is not good enough, right? We should be producing innovative learning environments that produce the best for kids, and like we saw so many in China last weekend, and I think that's where we should go, we can accomplish that without doing a major infrastructure refresh. So I think, again, just in in general, my issue with this is I think the the rationale is still not not complete, and I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I think it's on our best interest to sort of pause this this for now. I think indefinitely till we figure out all the data sets that we need in order to make an informed decision. The part of like not being in fiscal danger now also doesn't give me the same urgency that I had before, but also tells me that we don't need, we don't need to rush, that we can consider other, other alternatives that are not currently on on the table. Again, I don't want to make more work, but I think that we are in these roles and we bear the burden of these decisions and the labor to produce them because the community gave us the power to do so. So I know it could be inconvenient, but I think I would rather be inconvenient as the leader than the community being convenient in this moment. So with that said, again, I just, I think that a pause and reframing against, I think the discussion led by a consultant that's not from our community was missing like really nuanced approach in that his viewpoint is on the sheer data of the moment, and that's not clear enough to make a decision to understand how each school is a resource hub for that neighborhood and how a closure or shift really impacts lives in a certain way. So not trying to impugn his intent, I know he didn't mean any ill intent, but this data is only data without the equity and nuance of those that have lived here and been here our entire life, that kind of, kind of temporary decisions in a certain way. So, yeah, so in short, what my recommendation is, a person that does this for a living, just thinking we could stop for a minute, refresh our framing, and really open it up to all the other alternatives that we haven't currently explored, to ensure that we really have the best possible scenario, because again, I don't want to give false hope that we don't have to close schools, but I think I want to exhaust all of the conversation and all the data before we get to that point, and I don't think that we're there yet. And again, I recognize all the work to address the deficits we've done in over the years, and also the the planning that we have now, but I feel like we are possibly moving in a way where we could do more harm than good, when there may be other other pathways that we can consider that may not be as as much of a jarring impact to our community.
I also think that to to your point of pausing, I think it's a great conversation to not necessarily pause potentially the decision-making, right, of school closure, but not pause our continued dialogue and discussion and conversation. And Superintendent and Cabinet members, thank you for a lot of questions you've answered from us and from the community, and today we see you brought additional data, additional information, and even then, we we have additional questions, but I think that this allows us the opportunity to explore other creative ideas, also to learn from what other, you know, my colleague or Board President said, LAUSD has has engaged in, you know, educated workforce housing, and I know we've attended different sessions where we've learned about other creative ideas. And in that process, it gives us a time to further engage our community and and have more voices and have more opportunities to think about how might we continue to increase our academic outcomes and positive impacts, perhaps campaigning around bringing our students back to Linwood, refocusing on how do we think about branding, and I know Superintendent in your vision 2030, you talked about branding and uplifting a lot of the great practices that we have, so maybe rethinking about a campaign to bring our students back and then giving us the time with this information and, you know, additional questions that we have to make a better decision that does not impact our children. Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I've been up since 2:00 AM, so sorry if I misspoke in any kind of way, but again, yeah, it's just like more time to study that. And again, when I, when we think about alternatives, I think that I want to just state openly that I know that your role as staff is not to advocate for closure, is dealing with the current moment right now. But but in that, as was stated, there are other alternatives that we can just at least consider, and if we can end up at back at the same point, fine, but we have to make sure we did our homework and do diligence to look at all of the possible options at every angle and tested ourselves. Because again, when I'm up at 2:00 AM researching stuff and down and right with hold of data, a lot of things come up, so I'm sorry I'm rambling, had a lot of coffee, it's not working. But again, I do want to want to name that, that we we know that the advocacy here is not to close schools, but I think in doing so, we owe it to ourselves and to the community to really, now, this, this is my mind, a basis of knowledge that we build upon, then look at other alternatives to ensure that we've seen it all and considered it all. So when I say pause, I mean, pause a decision that we have to or are supposed to make coming up next month, we're, I'm, we're not close to making that decision yet, but I think that we have an opportunity to continue to build upon our current research to find the proper solution. And again, I'm actually excited about engaging the community in a different way, because I think that the way the committee was, was tasked with a no-win situation because it wasn't in a space of creativity and innovation and ideating what's to come. It was really dealing with like the fiscal cliffs and the danger of not doing something, right? But what if we talk about what what could be? What what we could, what future we want to invest in going forward? I think that's where our heads have to be. So again, I recognize the urgency of the moment of seeing a deficit, but it's also an opportunity to refocus and reframe, rebrand our focus as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. So now, moving on to item 10B. This is Board Bylaw 10, 9110, Terms of Office. So I bring this topic up because during the past few board meetings, like, it was said, you know, when, these board meetings get filled when there's a hot topic on on the agenda, and always when there's a hot topic on the agenda, you know, people express what they feel, what is the atmosphere among the community regarding our position as a board? And one thing that was brought up a lot is that people feel like there hasn't been a lot of change within the board structure, and not us as a board entirely, but within our membership. Some folks incorrectly said that we've been here for ten years. Obviously, that was not correct because Dr. Castro and I have not been here for that long, me having the shortest tenure, but people do feel that, you know, we've. the shortest tenure but people do feel that you know we've we've been here for for a while and I started doing some homework on to you know what are when these type of settlements do come up you know we had it across the our council they set themselves some term limits and the council not once but twice and reasons why folks and like I said I did some homework on this bring term limits because they feel like there's an important in recognizing a new leadership within the board and they they the community feels better when they see new faces and new ideas etcetera etcetera so having that been brought up by community members in the past two meetings that we've had and even during the town halls I bring this up is that whether we should put this question of terminators to our voters to our community and whether how they feel whether should we have term limits or not and we do have an election coming up in November obviously we don't want to spend money just like that and put it up in the primary election or special elections basically coalign it with actually nevermind the law says the question has to come up in the next general election so that will be in November so what do you how do you guys feel on this topic in terms of bringing this question up to the community?
You don't want to open me up for comments but I I might stay up till two in the morning so I could be as close to as articulate and well spoken as you are.
Don't do it I promise you for me I haven't so typically when we have board meetings there's a couple of days to review the topic so I heard about this coming on didn't have a chance to think about it or talk about it yet so I don't have a well informed opinion on it just yet I didn't know the format it was going to be discussed so when it comes to considering putting it on the on the ballot for voter input to council is there a cost to the district to do so?
As with any election I don't know what the numbers are score might you know in association with your elections.
My my last recollection was around twenty five thirty thousand dollars.
So in this process right now this would be considered like a first reading of the board policy or just just discussion I'm curious.
I don't know what I I just saw this line on the agenda so I think this was kind of an informational item I believe to discuss it in yeah I don't think there were any bylaws actually presented or draft bylaws yeah you'd need that for a first reading yeah.
Well, before we go spending money we don't have you know I've always thought because this has always come up it's not the first time you know voters vote every time there's an election and that's your built in safeguard if it's time to move on they vote you out so that's my take.
President, I want to acknowledge the terms of office I know that I recognize the importance of leadership with new perspectives and I also recognize the importance of inspiring our community members that want to step in to lead and and run for office feel that there are opportunities to run and support whether it's you know in one side or the other or even support via committees so I I do think that it's a conversation to be had and to continue about what we're thinking with respect to terms of office and and how I think what's important to me is how are we building future leaders how are we creating opportunities to mentor to support future leaders in our in our communities to at some point feel they're ready to step in and and lead for our children for our staff and for our families so I think we have more to learn about what what the terms would be if you know if you're thinking based on what we've read on our bylaws if it's two terms if it's three terms if it's four terms and and I think the next step for me would be what can we do to implement a way for inspiring new leaders and I know I've said it before that even our youth right our students are looking at opportunities to lead and are looking at us to create those opportunities for students to lead so I don't know if there's when you say terms of office if it was a specific term that that was shared through this board bylaw.
Actually, what I did ask Superintendent was to put the topic of terminators but I guess he went ahead and put this up because this is the by the bylaw section that talks about terms of office but basically if we were to you know further discuss this issue and decide whether to put this question it will be either to put a subsection in the bylaw or to add another section on the bylaw LAUSD for example has a subsection in their terms of office bylaw whereas South and Monte has a different section added and and but both cover terms limits on the bylaws.
I think I I would be in support of learning more about what that subsection would be how many terms and of course create leadership opportunity.
Yeah, I think related again I just haven't thought about it I've been jet lagged like it's nobody's business but for me when I think about election reform which is just part of that discussion of election reform a couple of things come up there's barriers to people running for office in Linwood and one of the biggest barriers is candidate statement at this point in time it's about twelve hundred dollars to get your candidate statement in the book and contrary to properly voters look at that whenever they come to the polls to see them with their books in the statement circle so there there are a lot of points of entry that are not accessible for the the average you know candidate wanting to run for the right reasons I think the discussion around public dollars and or publicly funded elections has come up something I also want to study more I think that that is a way to get undue influence and money out of politics but also the level of the playing field where it's it's about the most qualified candidate not the ones that has the most money so I think that I think that the issue of term limits is only part of a larger conversation that we need to explore because even myself like when I first ran for office I paid my candidate statement at five twenty eight PM because I struggled that hard to get the money to to put the statement statement on the ballot so and I consider myself decently privileged at that point in time as a twenty six year old but just think about like what it means to people that care about the community but just have this barrier of participation so I think that with the discussion of reform is I think is bigger than just term of term of office as far as term limits but like what are the ways in which we can truly encourage more participation in our democratic process by allowing candidates that are viable to run and viability not being economic but more or less skills and ability and attributes that lend themselves to great leadership so that's just my initial thoughts but definitely think we need more time to study what it would look like and I'm assuming the process would include entertaining proposals for what we might consider but yeah I think it's one of those things again we should definitely study but really look at best practices that are out there again I'm in the in the mind of being radical and really think about ways to really understand how we remove barriers and not just do things because it's readily available to us but what is actually going to make make the most impact for the most people.
And and staff can continue to research and provide some more information on other like districts.
Oh, that's what I'm gonna say my bad again.
Yeah.
2am brain tired.
Yes.
My other concern is I also am concerned about staff capacity right now because again we have the elephant in the room is this facilities discussion and I really don't want our staff to be bogged down with an item that is not not as pressing I would say that not saying it's not important but I really want to just put this issue of facilities to bed sort of then later so just want to make sure our colleagues are mindful of capacity of staff adding another thing to study and take time away from so this is a consideration so if we want to look at a certain pacing I'm okay with that but again I don't want to add another thing that's not as pressing I think again it's warranted discussion and research but right now my mind is really on how we settle this issue and and put that to bed first and foremost.
I think I just want to say what would be our next step and I you know I understand capacity but I also understand that there are maybe different moving areas where we want to address some question or concern and I'm just wondering is this an item that will be explored further and agendized at a future meeting is is that the?
Yeah, I think we need to the goal is to also look at board governance as well I think January February is usually the time that you know despite whatever happens you know I think that's a good opportunity for me as a Superintendent Cabinet to also remind the board of the roles responsibilities and really going through the bylaws as well and so to Dr. Hardy's point I think really looking at it as a whole and in terms of the implications of this as well as something that we can take a look at in January February if the board would like that direction yeah.
Okay, there's no other comment you know I just brought up this item because it was something that was brought up in 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 the comments more than once that you know people feel like we've been here for too long even though I've only barely completed four years and and yeah you know let's put it this way you know presidents used did not used to have terminators FDR was elected president four times and reasons why the presidents were put terminators by Congress because one like you say people are mad one party was mad and other folks feel like the president the position of president was becoming king like and right but but basically like I brought it up based on the notion that you know folks thought that hard sort of resentment and and kind of since the question was brought up is that you know that's something that we can implement ourselves that's something that we can put up to question to them or they themselves can pull up to question as well as community members alright so moving on since we've you've been up since two I've been up you beat me by two hours let's go to item eleven report out of closed session.
With reference to section five A A one the board received information no final action was taken and that concludes the readout from tonight's closed session.
Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting moved by Mr. Dr. Hardy seconded by Dr. Castro with no objections this meeting is adjourned at eight thirty five PM until the December eleventh twenty twenty five regular meeting of the board.